Close beside the Watchon Mountain, said our school so dear. All our precious years of childhood, we have spent them here. For whatever be our watchword, conquer and prevail. Hail to thee, our alma mater, such plains that would all hail. When across the world we wander, this will be our song. Honor, love, and true devotion, all to hear it all. For whatever be our watchword, conquer and prevail. Hail to thee, our alma mater, such plains that would all hail.
Welcome, everybody, to the October meeting. Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bauer, Ms. Boroff, Ms. Brody,
Here.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Sariani, Ms. Williams, Ms. Winkler, Dr. Kolkowski, Ms. Murray.
Here. So, um, we did the Pledge of Allegiance during the tenure celebration, which was at six thirty. So I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is Executive Session Report. Uh, we, in Executive Session, we talked about Personnel, PIB, Suspension and Detention Report, and the Legal Status Report. Uh, no additions to the agenda. And I am gonna go to Dr. Mass with the Superintendent's Report.
So tonight, we had a tenure celebration before we start the meeting, and that, of course, is very special and favorite night for, for all of us. In addition, we are looking forward to Dr. McGarry's data report, and and we also want to welcome our new student representative. The other big thing on the horizon is we are working on plans to really make our, our district and our schools future-ready. And Mr. Jones will speak more to that.
Yeah, so in the past couple of weeks, we really started to kick off our planning process. Um, and so last couple of weeks, we really planned to, so in the next three weeks, um, we're future-ready. We're looking at, um, meetings of all our school buildings and on the panel staff, uh, and just investigating and asking them exactly, uh, what the needs are of the school district. Um, in addition, we, you know, the last board meeting, we had, we were investigating, uh, do we need more space? So we're investigating the purchase of the building. And that last meeting, we approved, um, an appraisal, and that appraisal has been kicked off, the building we're looking at. Uh, and then thirdly, uh, on the agenda tonight is, um, uh, external communications firm we approve. And we are, will be start, it'll be, they're gonna help us with all the community outreach and making sure the community's in line, and we're taking all the interest, everybody in, and be ready for a questionnaire that'll be going out to the whole community, so look forward to that over the next few weeks. And the next newsletter, the questionnaire. And that's it for my report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, Board President Announcement, so New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law required, was enacted to ensure that the right of the public to and attend meetings of the public bodies at which business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education has caused notice to this meeting to be published and having the date, time, and place there posted to Board of Education Office located at five twelve Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. Such notice was also provided in written form forwarded to the Union County Hawk, the Star Ledger, the Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, the Borough Clerk of Fanwood, and the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings as adopted May ninth, twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna move over to our Student Representation Representative Report. I'm gonna ask Cyra to introduce our Junior Class Board Representative, Mac.
Hi, so first I wanna extend a huge welcome and thank you to Mac, who is the Junior Board of Education Representative. This was elected last a cou- two weeks ago, and this is awesome because he's an amazing student, and he's in, involved in a bunch of extracurriculars, and I'm really excited to get to work with him. Um, as for other updates, though, for sports, we already had Girls' varsity soccer, Senior Night was tonight, along with a cross-country meet after school today. Tomorrow, we have the Homecoming Football Game against JFK, and this week has been Spirit Week at the High School, and our Homecoming Dance was yesterday. For the students, make sure to vote for your twenty twenty-three Homecoming Court, and the winners will be announced during the game tomorrow. And then, on a school-related note, marking period one ends on November fourteenth, and we're halfway through the first semester.
First off, I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to be here. Um, I've been a part of the district since I was a student at Kohl's, and it's really exciting and a great honor to be here. Um, so building off what Cyra was saying, at the high school, all the clubs are up and running. We have DECA, Model UN, FBLA, which are starting the competition processes. The Fall Play, Romeo and Juliet, is currently in rehearsal, and the shows are on November seventeenth and eighteen. This past Tuesday, the juniors took the PSAT, and overall, the school year's off to a great start.
Thank you very much, guys. All right, um, so moving on to instructional update, I, um, I'm gonna do a real quick introduction, somebody that doesn't really need to be introduced. Um, you know, if you, if you've been around the district, you, you see this guy walking around and, and you, you wanna be him. Um, he's a model for our students, for our staff. He has done wonders with our lacrosse program, and now he's doing wonders off the field in our community. So I'd like to bring up Nick Miselli for recognition. So, uh, we have a resolution for you that I'm gonna read. So whereas Nicholas Miselli, a dedicated and compassionate member of our community, a health and physical education teacher at Nettingham Middle School, and whereas on September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, while picking up his own child at Brunner Elementary School, demonstrated remarkable, remarkable heroism and resourcefulness by providing lifesaving CPR to a parent in time of dire need. Whereas, Mr. Miselli's quick thinking and decisive actions in response to the emergency situation were instrumental in ensuring the safe, parent's safety while waiting for police and paramedics to arrive, preventing further harm and offering reassurance during a time of distress. And whereas, Mr. Miselli's exemplary display of courage, professionalism, and compassion serves as an inspiration to all members of the Scotch Plains Family Community and sets a compelling example for our students, showing them the importance of empathy, responsibility, and taking action in times of crisis. It is the belief of the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education that such acts of kindness and selflessness deserve to be recognized, celebrated, and commended by our school and the wider community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education recognizes and extends its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Nicholas Miselli for his extraordinary act of heroism and the profound impact that it had on the well-being of our school community. And be it further resolved, the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education commends and thanks Nicholas Miselli for his dedication and commitment to the safety and welfare of our students, parents, and staff. Thank you.
Okay, so we're coming out for the, uh, next update, which is the State Assessment Report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to be able to join you tonight for our annual State Assessment Report, highlighting student achievement data from the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as provided by the New Jersey Department of Education. The focus of tonight's presentation is on four assessment systems mandated and overseen by the NJ DOE, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, the Dynamic Learning Maps, and the Access for ELLs. Before I turn to reporting results, it's important to note that test scores can only give us an indication of how a student performed or a group performed on a test at a certain time and date. The results don't tell you, or don't tell us, the whole story, as we be, as we will hear again from our own students at the end of the presentation. They don't tell you about the richness of our curriculum and all the ways in which our students, through the rigorous efforts of our teachers and administrators, continue to learn during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, or to develop passions and interests, and to grow and excel in ways that a single test given on a date could never show us. Preparing for and implementing state assessments takes a village and the collaboration of everyone who serves in the roles listed here. Special thanks to Lisa Howard, who's here tonight, and to Dr. Tim Donyou, who managed testing to our Board of Education Curriculum Committee members, who offered feedback on the presentation and who consistently support the work we do for our students. With that said, we will begin with the DLM, or the Dynamic Learning Maps. The DLM is taken by some students, particularly those with the most significant cognitive disabilities, for whom general state assessments are not appropriate, even with accommodations. DLM assessments offer these students a way to show what they know and can do in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. DLM student score reports provide results related to a student's overall performance level for the, for that subject. And students, um, are, their results are reported using four different performance levels, emerging, approaching, target, and advanced. Of course, under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, known as FERPA, state reporting of student data may not be published if the results would yield personally identifiable information about an individual student. In New Jersey, a group must have ten individuals in order to report out. So with such a small number of students in grades three through eight and eleven taking the DLM, we're unable to provide grade-specific information. As such, we're presenting the results for all seventeen students in the district who took the DLM in ELA, without any kind of grade level attached, as well as the eighteen who took it in math, and the five who took it in science. When used in combination with multiple measures of achievement, such as classroom observations and teacher-developed tests, the DLM assessment provides information about the progress of groups of students, as well as the effectiveness of educational programs. Our supervisors, Ms. Pinino and, and Mrs. Tomescu, who are here tonight, as well as, um, Dr. Rabimbas, have studied these results, um, and the data through the lens of each individual who took it and work with our case managers and teachers to target instruction to individual student needs. The Access for Ls is taken annually by multilingual learners in kindergarten through grade twelve. The assessment helps us to monitor student progress in learning academic English, which is the type of English you need, uh, for reading and understanding study materials in a specific subject such, um, as well as writing about those subjects. The assessment is used to determine when a student has a level of proficiency in academic English that may no longer require English as a second language services. It is important to note that all students identified as limited English proficient are required to take the assessment annually, even if their families waive ESL services. So this year, eighty-one students were required to take the access, um, which is actually just one more than, than last year. And of those eighty-one students who took the access this past spring, nineteen of them, or twenty-three point four percent, scored above the cutoff required to exit our ESL program. That's a point-three decrease over last year's percentage. Um, and as Mrs. Howard, our supervisor, has indicated, this is comparable to the twenty-three percent pre-pandemic rate that we, we always saw, um, from our students. So we'll now turn our attention to the NJSLA, or the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, which are given in ELA for grades three through nine, math for grades three through eight, as well as Algebra One and Geometry, as well as Science in grades five, eight, and eleven. We'll start with the big picture question of how do our results compare to overall state results? And we will work our way from there to more disaggregated data. So with the state in gray, or the left of each pair of bars, and SPF in, of course, Raider Blue, the next three slides will show a quick comparison of our students' meeting or exceeding expectations performance relative to the state. Here in ELA, you can see SPF again outperformed the state by over twenty percent in several grades, three, four, and eight. It's also worth noting that in two thousand nineteen, which was the pre-pandemic year, sixty-three percent of third graders met or exceeded expectations, suggesting that our efforts to make up for learning loss in this grade have paid off. Grade four is just four percent away from matching pre-pandemic outcomes, while grade five is just six percent off. We are working to have that learning loss gap closed this year. Here's the same comparison in math, where all SPF grades outperformed the state. You'll notice that third graders and fourth graders outperformed the state in meeting and exceeding expectations by twenty-seven and twenty-eight percent, while fifth graders did by twenty-two percent and seventh graders by twenty-six percent. Here, grades four and five met pre-pandemic outcomes, while grade three is just off by three percent. The needle, the needle has really moved in other grade levels as well, just not as dramatically as it has in these grades. And finally, here's the big picture in science. What's worth noting here is the lower percentage of students meeting expectations in eighth grade. As a result of pandemic, this was the first NJSLA test for all of these students. Um, students in grades five, eleven, and eight last year were the, it was the first time any of them had ever taken a science assessment. At the eighth grade level, we know that, um, in, in, because of the pandemic and, and the fact that those eighth graders started their middle school years in the pandemic, they had less opportunity for the kinds of hands-on explorations, excuse me, that we know lead to a depth of understanding of concepts and relevant skills. So before we take a closer look at the results in these three areas, it's important to set our data lens with a few things to keep in mind. While we'll be, while we will be taking a five-year view of our results, it will only be looking at data from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three. You'll see here that there are no bars for those years in the graph on this slide. So instead of, instead of, um, shrinking the data from years for which we have data, for two years of no data, I'll be presenting these in the form um, with the years of no results just simply missing, so you won't see the two blanks. But you'll be able to see the bars a little bit larger for those sitting in the back book, we'll help you to see it. Results for ELA and math are reported in five levels, as you can see on this slide. And obviously, we wanna see more green than anything else. Um, as in the combination of the two greens represents students who are demonstrating, meeting grade-level expectations on the assessment. For each assessment, we'll look at a slide that gives us a district-at-a-glance view of the spring twenty twenty-three, and then a set of slides that will place SPF and state results side by side. We'll start with ELA results and SPF at a glance. At the bottom of each bar, you'll see the grade-level results presented by the bar with the five levels indicated by color and percentage of students in each range. As you can see, there's more green than any other color, or even the other three colors combined. In the slides that follow, you'll notice the subject and grade level for data, um, presented at the top, and then you'll see two sets of scores, um, like in the three bars that we saw before on the sample. On the left, you'll see progression for SPF from eighteen nineteen through to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And on the right, you'll see statewide progression of scores over those same years. Keep in mind that the three bars in each set represents different students. So let's begin by looking at each grade level with a five-year view. Here we see third-grade ELA results, SPF on the left and the state on the right. A juxtaposition of the first and third bar in each set gives you a sense of where we are in terms of returning to pre-pandemic outcomes in the subject and the grade level that is the focus. Here's fourth grade, with seventy-two percent meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations overall, very close to pre-pandemic and, um, pre-pandemic achievement levels. We had saw similar results for grade five, and a slight dip in grade six, and progress in grade seven. In grade eight, we see progress in more students exceeding expectations than in two thousand twenty-two, and two percent more meeting or exceeding than in that year. In ninth grade, we see an expansion of the yellow, orange, and red segments, inconsistent with the grade level's performance in grade eight, with eleven percent more not meeting expectation. The next slides provide a look at a year-to-year cohort growth. So we're gonna look now at, um, the same students over subsequent years. As you can see here, this cohort of students, um, so these are our current fifth graders, and we have results from when they were third graders and fourth graders. These students made an impressive eleven percent jump over the course of fourth grade, a true testament to our fourth-grade teachers. And I've enjoyed getting around the district to congratulate them on, on that success. As with their predecessors, students now in sixth grade um, lost a little bit of ground in the transition to middle school. But looking back to the fifth grade in two thousand nineteen, they too lost ground between fourth and fifth grade. And actually, this year's drop from fourth to fifth is one percent less than it was for fifth graders in two thousand nineteen. Current seventh graders picked up one percent in meeting and exceeding expectations in grade six, and also saw a positive decrease in the red and orange ranges. With current eighth graders, we can begin to reach back to the, um, reach back to this cohort of students and how they performed in third grade. So we can see here that they're performing comparably on seventh-grade standards to how they performed on third-grade standards. And the same can be said of this year's current ninth-grade students. While tenth-grade students, um, as in the example of the fourth to fifth-grade transition, lost some ground. We typically see that when students move from one's grade level to, to a new grade band. And as we have done in the past, we'll now look at district performance of various groups by demographics and the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, as well as the change in this from two thousand twenty-two. So first, we'll look at gender. Overall, we see a sizable gap between males and females. This gap shows up as early as third grade, closes a bit in fifth grade, but remains through ninth grade as measured by this assessment. You'll see some changes when we look at the NJGPA later on. This slide shows, uh, results by race and ethnicity. Take a look at the percentage change in the far-right column. We saw some good, but still insufficient growth over, um, last year from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. And this slide shows results by students in various programs, with notable increases in students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, as well as students who have five oh four accommodations. And now we'll turn to mathematics. Again, we start with a district-at-a-glance view, and again, we see a lot of green, with the exception of grade six. What you may also notice in this slide is the three shades of green in geometry, as meeting expectations for this subject include scores in Level Three, which is typically yellow. And as we did in ELA, we'll now turn to grade-level performance, looking at five years of data, again, compressed into, to three bars, um, representing two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three. And again, each bar represents a different group of students. So here's grade three, students who started kindergarten in the year disrupted by the pandemic. Um, but they held steady, just two percent below where they were in two thousand nineteen. And here's a slide to really celebrate. Twenty twenty-three's fourth graders seem to have benefited the quickest from our learning acceleration efforts. As this grade level's green outcomes match two thousand nineteen's, in fact, if you look closely, they have more of the dark green and they, they achieved at that, uh, exceeding grade-level expectations. Fifth grade made some good progress over the previous year, um, and this grade level is also back to the outcomes that we reached in two thousand nineteen. Sixth grade improved slightly by shrinking the percentages in the, um, yellow, orange, and, and red levels, and as did seventh grade. And as evidenced by these results, we still have some work to do in Algebra One, the course taken by most of our eighth graders. The math department has proactively responded by exploring the integration of state-provided resources. These resources not only facilitate consistent practice within the curriculum, but also enable us to offer students valuable feedback through targeted tasks. By leveraging these tools, we're increasing support to our students, bridging gra, bridging gaps, and enhancing their understanding in Algebra One, and ensuring a more robust and comprehensive learning experience. This, this slide shows our results in geometry, the test taken by students enrolled in our AAG course, which is Algebra and Analytic Geometry. What's noticeable here again is the three shades of green that constitute, um, meeting expectations. Eighty-eight percent of our students, therefore, met or exceeded expectations. So as we did with ELA, we'll, we'll take a look at some cohort growth year over year. Students now in fifth grade continue to perform well in the transition from third to fourth, with seventy-two percent of them meeting or exceeding expectations. Here's our current sixth graders, and you'll notice they took that traditional dip in, um, in grade five. And you'll notice, um, we have some work to do in grade seven, and I'll talk a little bit more about, um, next steps towards this at the end of the presentation. As you can see here in this, um, example of our last year's seventh graders, from comparing them to when they were in third grade, um, you can see that our seventh-grade teachers have some great, um, experience in catching students up, as they did last year in preparation for these students to enter Algebra One. It seems that teachers' efforts towards having more hands-on activities are having a positive impact on students' learning. So we'll now take a look at demographics as it relates to math. Still awake? As you can see here, the difference between male and female achievement overall is much less striking than it is in ELA. Both females and males saw increases, um, over the two thousand twenty-two results. With the exception of Hispanic or Latino students, all groups in the category of race and ethnicity advanced in performance in two thousand twenty-two. And this slide looks at various special programs or other identities that students possess. You can see here that as a group, economically disadvantaged students performed almost ten percent better than they did in the previous year, while English learners had a drop of as many, uh, percentage points, and students with disabilities and students with five oh, five oh four accommodations increased their performance. Well, let's take a look at science, a test given in grades five, eight, and eleven. Because of the way the pandemic fell, as I said earlier, this is the first time any of these students in these grades took a science NJSLA. Unlike ELA and math, science achievement is defined by four performance levels, from below proficient to advanced proficiency. Here is our district glance, um, district-at-a-glance view, which alone looks quite concerning, um, until you compare it to the rest of the state, which we will do in the next slide. In grade five, our students performed almost better, almost ten percent better. In grade five, our students performed almost better, almost ten percent better than the state in terms of proficiency. And behind these overall scores, we also noticed, or I should say, Ms. Maria noticed, that students performed better in physical science and life science than they did in earth and space science. In grade eight, the difference is similar with the scores in both SPF and the state trending in a positive direction over the prior year's administration. Grade eight increased the percentage of students at above expectations and decreased the percentage of students in below expectations. And in grade eleven, our students outperformed the state by almost thirty percent, with four percent more of our students meeting expectations than those who took the high school assessment last year. What's more, this test was taken by twelfth graders last time around. Is that right, Ms. Maria? It wasn't twelfth graders? It was eleventh graders. At some point, we caught twelfth graders in the science assessment. So as you can see, our students, you know, improved over their results in twenty twenty-two. And digging further into the data, Ms. Maria and her team noticed that compared to district data from twenty twenty-two, we decreased the percentage of students at below expectations in all three science domains and increased the percentage of students at above expectations in earth and space and physical science. Thought I was being heckled for a second. So we'll now look at, we'll look at performance by various demographic groups like we did with the other areas. So in science, there's just a point four-six difference between females and males, with each group improving performance over last year. You'll also notice that science is of the three assessments, has the smallest gaps when we look at students with various racial and ethnic identities. And our results for students in various programs, though, declined between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We will be digging further into this data to really understand this some more. All of these slides will be on our district website, so you can study them more closely. So the final assessment we'll be looking at is the first administration, the consequences of the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. It was first administered to grade eleven students in the March of two thousand twenty-two, but it was a field test. For this year's seniors, the test is one pathway for meeting graduation assessment requirements. We will see a year-to-year comparison, and I think you'll see clear evidence of what difference, of what a difference results are when a test is considered high stakes, something we've talked about before in terms of how students approach these assessments. This group of students in twenty twenty-three had consequences for the test they took. Syra's shaking her head yes. The test is based on standards that most of our students are focused on by the end of grade ten, and it provides one pathway, as I said, for meeting the graduation proficiency assessment required for the class of two thousand twenty-four and will be required for the class of two thousand twenty-five. Unlike other assessments, this one is more of a pass/fail with scaled score target ranges determining if a student is either quote graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. So in ELA, ninety-one point six of the members of the class of two thousand twenty-four scored in the graduation-ready range compared to eighty point five students across the state. I was curious, though, to see how these same students performed on their previous NJSLA. So I looked back at two thousand nineteen. This cohort, when they were in seventh grade, which was the last time they took an ELA assessment, they scored eighty-five percent meeting or exceeding expectations back as seventh graders. So that suggests that they have continued to grow and improve in English language arts over time. This slide shows the breakdown of demographics with not as wide a variation as we have seen in other results. Again, perhaps because of the consequences attached to this. Looking at the far right column, that's where you really see the difference, the change from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. You know, you saw students increasing performance by forty-six percent over two thousand twenty-two in some categories. So what happens to the eight point four percent of students who did not earn a graduation-ready score? Not including Syra, I'm sure. As you can see here, four point five percent of them met another measure such as a qualifying PSAT, SAT, ACT, or Accuplacer score that helped them satisfy that requirement. So that left us with three point nine percent of students, and those students are currently enrolled in a course designed to prepare them to retake the NJGPA again. Students who do not pass it the second time, then will be able to satisfy the graduation requirement through a portfolio review process later this year. Our results in mathematics on the NJGPA are in line with what we saw on the geometry assessment earlier. In math, our students performed twenty-three point three percent better than the state average. And looking back again to how these students performed on their NJSLA back in seventh grade, I learned that seventy percent of them met or exceeded expectations back then, so that we can again say that this cohort of students has continued to grow and reach higher levels of achievement on standardized tests. A positive note from our math department's deeper dive into this data reveals that our students excelled in the domains of algebra and functions, two intricately connected areas that form the backbone of our secondary curriculum. Mr. Orin, our new supervisor of mathematics at the secondary level, shared that these standards have been a dedicated focus of our department, and we remain committed to their integration within each course's curriculum through a spiraling approach. Our goal is to ensure that students consistently build a foundation, a strong foundation in these critical areas as they progress through our sequence of math classes. The variation in demographic groups is much more, from a high of eighty-six point two percent to a low of thirty-two point four percent. Our eleventh grade teachers will be digging deeper into this to determine strategies for reaching very different results in two thousand twenty-four. So similar to ELA, we have about four percent of students tested who need to take this test again or meet some other metric, such as the portfolio review, in order to achieve that graduation assessment requirement. So now we'll consider some initial observations and steps we are planning to take or are already taking. So as a general summary across all content areas, our students continue to perform, as you've seen, above state averages in all subject areas. That should say all, it says ELA, but we should say all. And as a district, we have returned or nearly returned to levels of achievement seen before the disruption of the pandemic in many areas, and especially in the early grades where students started their education in the pandemic. We will learn from this data, of course, and stay in a balanced relationship with it, using it as one of several measures to promote student learning. We'll utilize it to monitor progress for groups of students, as well as to work towards closing gaps in performance outcomes. In their analyses, our ELA supervisors, Dr. McKenna and Ms. Dunston, indicated that as students continue to reacclimate to school and build reading stamina, something we've really been working hard on, they are increasingly ready to take on a similar level of work to pre-pandemic times and a higher complexity of works than they were challenged, than they have been challenged, but were challenged with prior to the pandemic. We've noticed a slight discrepancy between outcomes in reading and written expression, with those in literary analysis and research simulation writing tasks. And we've noted that nonfiction reading is an area continuing to need improvement. It's worth noting that based on the NJGPA results, changes were made, so based upon the field test in two thousand twenty-two, changes were made last summer, the summer of two thousand twenty-two, to the eleventh grade English course, with an enhanced focus on analytical writing and skills at developing arguments. So Dr. McKenna believes that this added to the success that we saw this year on the NJGPA. So our plans moving forward in ELA, continue to use formative assessments and use high-quality data, including classroom performance. We've created a team of data coaches who just this week are holding data analysis sessions to unpack the most recent math administration. And we're going to use on-demand benchmark data to support literacy development with increasingly complex tasks. We're going to work on articulation of literary analysis and research simulation tasks. We're going to increase instruction in nonfiction reading strategies. And we're building the capacity of teachers in all content areas to support students as readers of nonfiction. The other thing that we really think is going to help us a lot in all of these areas in fifth grade is the teaming approach we're taking, where teachers are unable to have more time to do specific planning for content areas that they teach and also can teach a lesson more than one time before leaving it and moving on. So in math, data shows improvements in many demographic groups. For example, the percentage of students who identify as Black or African-American who met or exceeded expectations in both seventh grade and geometry rose from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. This positive trend underscores the effectiveness of our targeted efforts and initiatives in supporting the academic success of all of our students. Clearly, we're not satisfied with where we are and still have some more work to do. But I think it reflects our commitment to fostering an inclusive and equitable learning environment, ensuring that all students have the opportunity to excel. We're encouraged by this progress and remain dedicated to continuing our work to empower every student. The data also shows, as our elementary math supervisor, Ms. Rosander, said, that students have a strong foundation in fractions by looking into that data. We know that proficiency with fractions is an important foundation for learning more advanced mathematics. And fractions are, is really a student's first introduction to abstraction in math, and as such, provide a great introduction to algebra in elementary and middle school years. Our secondary math supervisor, Mr. Orin, in his analysis, shared that students are excelling in algebra and functions. And both supervisors have concluded that our students need a greater focus on modeling. Moving forward, we will focus our efforts on professional development on modeling, continue training in the standards for mathematical practice. Fifth grade teaming, again, is an area that is really going to be a focus as we can now work with teachers specifically on math. Enhanced use of math data with our data coaches, review pacing and sequencing in geometry, also known as AAG, and exploration of resources to enhance our work in Algebra One and geometry. In science, we've noted improvements in some demographic groups. In eighth grade, we saw an increase in passing rate for Hispanic and Latino students and our Black or African-American students. And in twelfth grade, we saw an increase in passing rate for students with IEPs, students who are economically disadvantaged, and our Hispanic or Latino students. Our science supervisor, Ms. Maria, also noted from her deeper dive that similar to state-level data, our fifth graders are struggling the most with critiquing practices, which includes engaging in argument from evidence and obtaining, evaluating, and communicating information. So this is where our efforts in ELA, in terms of informational attacks, crosses over into the world of learning and excelling in science. Ms. Maria also noted from her deeper dive that we see a decreased percentage of students scoring below expectations in all three scientific practices, investigating, sense-making, and critiquing. Our next steps in science include, again, with the pilot of the fifth grade structure, those teaching science will have the ability to dive deeper into curriculum. And as I said earlier, have multiple opportunities to improve their lessons. We're also working to make sure our assessment practices in middle school science do a better job of preparing students for the NJSLA format. Most of our assessment has been performance-based and not so much the kinds of questions that students are encountering on the NJSLA. So we're looking to integrate more of those NJSLA-like questions into our units of study. At the high school level, we're going to continue to increase student literacy and proficiency in science. So we think that in all subjects this year, we have a lot of exciting learning opportunities ahead to support our students and to work on behalf of them. So I want to close with some wise words from our students that help to remind us to give the results discussed tonight the proper perspective. We asked current high school students the following question, in fact, this year. Because of the NJGPA having such an impact upon students, I posed the question to our seniors, and the question was this. What do state test results not tell us about you as a student? Some of their answers included my personality, how hard I work and how committed I am as a student, what I'm really passionate about, like art and women's studies and literature, my creativity, my work ethic, my passion, my life skills, my creativity, my work ethic, ability to work on a subject that I'm passionate about, other skills, and ability to work in a non-pressurizing environment. This student said, "These tests are a great way to show how great of a test taker I am, but not much about how good I am as a student." And this last student said, "Being a student has more layers than the state test has no shot of portraying." In my opinion, for the test, if you are not the best reader or it takes you a while to read and understand something, you are already set up for failure. That doesn't define you as a student at all. So our brilliant students remind us that behind every data point, there's a child. They remind us of our strategic planning and the goal that we have related to the whole child, which is to engage students academically, socially, and emotionally to be resilient, creative, critical thinkers through authentic learning experiences so that they feel validated, self-aware, interconnected, and can approach the world's challenges with empathy and passion, which none of that can really be measured by the assessments discussed tonight. Thank you. Are there any questions? No question? Oh, we have to go back to the mic. We can go back to the stage. Oh, I can see it.
So thank you, Dr. McGarry. That was very thorough. Once again, thank you. I think, you know, continuing to look forward to the deep dives into some of the some of the just made, but it definitely seems like we're making progress. Thank you for that. Does anybody have comments or questions for Dr. McGarry?
I really liked, it was so readable, it was a follow-up.
Thank you.
Thanks to that, thanks to that group over there, too.
So we are moving on to our first public comment section. In accordance with Scotch Plains Stanwood Public School Bylaws zero one six four, zero one six five, the meeting will be open for fifteen minutes for public comment, maximum three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing the superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time limit remains, speakers may address other matters. Speakers, please come to the mic, state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note boards use public opinion. Public comment period is an opportunity to listen to citizens' concerns, not to debate issues or enter into a question-and-answer session or a cross-examination between the public and individual board members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board meeting will be resolved that evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issues, the superintendent or his or her designate. So I will now open the first public comment section. If you have a public comment you'd like to make, please step forward to the mic, state your name and the town in which you reside. Seeing that one, I'll close the first public comment section, and we will have another one later in the meeting. Moving on to additional reports, so letters to the board. Seven emails were received by the from the public by the board and were sent to the appropriate administrator. We will now move over to committee reports. Does anyone want to go? Ms. Brody? Sure.
I have a community relations report. We discussed good news from the superintendent liaison meeting. And we also discussed the potential of a creation of a task force regarding responsible use of technology. More to come on that. Some of the good news highlights are, with Brunner, the SPF Music Booster hosted a successful fundraising event on October fourth. It was the first one since fall two thousand nineteen, Pasta Night. And they welcomed over three hundred and fifty people for the night of music provided by high school musicians and some staff members against principals Sasha Slocum and music teachers Heather Filipski and Charlie Jackson. Local restaurants and families donated food that was served. The boosters did a great job getting this tradition back on the map. Thank you to all. At Kohl's, the fourth grade students had been enjoying realistic fiction stories across the curriculum. They had some great discussions in social studies about the Turf War and how the community will be impacted by the development that replaced Parker Gardens. In Evergreen, grades K through four enjoyed a virtual visit with Joanna Ho. She shared her love of books, spoke about her life, what inspired her to begin writing books, and how important the principles of anti-bias and equity are in all aspects of her work. She also read her new book, Say My Name, and answered students' questions. McGinn, they're doing Diversity Book Challenge again. And this month, they are doing both Hispanic Heritage and Diverse Families Month. School One, students and teachers participated in Walk to School Day from Fanwood and Scotch Plains Municipal Buildings. Nanningham Middle School, a shout out to the tech department of of the the district for a very quick turnaround time with tech at ticket this year. And many staff members expressed that they liked starting the year with the half days and would like to repeat that in the future. Taro Middle School also had the same sentiment. At Taro Middle School, the staff benefited from the Professional Day workshops and had positive feedback regarding ability to select workshops. At the high schools, some teachers are interested in pursuing a No Place for Hate certification for hi for the high school. Department of Special Services, the opening went well. They had very successful open house. The teacher of records, child study team, and general education teachers were able to collaborate to best meet the stand the needs of each student. And athletics, homecoming is this Friday, and the football team will be taking on JFK at seven P M. So this just highlights all the diverse things that the that and that's just like one thing from each school. The the it's a whole big page of events and things that the schools are doing. So it just highlights the diversity and all the different things that are going on in the district. And that's that report. Any questions? Can I do finance? All right, finance, we had a referendum referendum update from Mr. Jones. And we discussed the architect report. The report received on the day of the meeting and needs to be reviewed in detail. There are high level, high levels that the building, the building that they're discussing, we are discussing purchasing looks to be in good shape structurally and would cost approximately twenty-eight million to renovate to meet the needs of the district. There's some status updates were provided to the Fanwood Mayor regarding this. Discussion with the real estate attorney about options to buy the building. Once the sellers opened the options, the invite an environmental review and appraiser would would be next. District building layout is being gathered and sent to the architects for review. Meeting with our public relations firm, who will be assisting with the communications throughout this project. The Energy Savings Improvement Plan, ESIP, our F resolution. This program allows for energy efficient upgrades without using monies from capital reserve. The cost of improvement is paid by the savings achieved. Initial thoughts would be around HVAC, building controls, and solar. And a residency check proposal, an initial estimate provided by TrueView, background screening and investigations to perform additional residence residency investigation services at a cost of approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. Additional follow-up on other schools using their services as well on other companies who perform this work. And that concludes that report.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Any questions for Ms. Brody? Other community reports? Mr. Yarn?
The Curriculum Committee Report. The Curriculum Committee did meet on Tuesday. And the reason my report is so short is because we mainly focused on the state assessment report that Dr. McGary just delivered. We had an opportunity to hear it in advance and and ask some questions and reflect on it. So I do not need to reiterate anything that was said. And then Dr. McGary gave us some highlights on the October ninth Professional Development Day in which seventy-nine workshops were offered to staff. A whole variety of topics were covered, ranging from artificial intelligence to dyslexia across all content areas and levels, grade levels, climate education, speaking up and interrupting bias, training, which was done in the past for teachers, was given to aides, supporting multilingual learners, investigating racism in songs and rhymes. And PE teachers receive training on social skills and injury prevention. And then just also, we discussed that there has been no update in the Department of Education's High Impact Tutoring Competitive Grant that we talked about at our last meeting. Our next meeting is November fourteen.
Thank you, Ms. Yarn. Any questions for Ms. Yarn? Any other committee reports? Ms. Williams?
The Wellness and Equity Committee. The Wellness and Equity Committee met on October. The Wellness and Activity Wellness and Equity Committee met on October fifth. There were a few agenda items that we discussed. A couple, a few community organizations in town as related to wellness and equity would like to partner with the school district. We've discussed that as well as considering the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar, which at times can be challenging because we know some of the district days change. So we did talk about that as well as the district theme regarding Fitness Fridays and everything related to wellness and mindfulness regarding that. There were no recommendations at the time, and our next meeting is Thursday, November second at seven P M. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions for Ms. Williams? Any other committee reports? Next section's normal report, which we received. We will move on to the superintendent out of district placements and field trip reports.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So for item one, it is the out of district placements. For item number two, it's the field trips as listed.
Do we have a motion to approve both of those items? Dr. Kulkowski, seconded by Ms. Williams. Any comments or questions? You're going to abstain? Okay, Ms. Winkler is going to be a no on F two three. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report, Dr. Mast. Personnel and.
I asked the board to approve the personnel report as discussed and exact this evening.
Ms. Winkler? Seconded, Ms. Boroff. Any comments or questions? Mr. Jones, please call the roll.
Ms. Boroff? Ms. Brody? Ms. Mitchell? Ms. Suryani? Ms. Williams? Ms. Winkler? Dr. Kulkowski? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to business functions.
Number one, staff training. Number two, early services, special ed students. Number three, we discussed previously, but this is a energies, energy services competitive bid. So this is the energy services improvement plan. So this is to go out to bid for a provider to come in and do a full deep dive of energy audit on in into schools, to actually see where we could actually have savings. And there'll be just after this report is done, that's when the board will have to make some decisions in terms of if we updated to LED lights throughout the districts, be some savings, which then funds some air conditioning or maybe some building controls. At that point, there will be decisions. But this, at this point, it's just putting together a competitive bid to vet companies to come in and do that. Number four is our annual comprehensive maintenance plan report. This is standard report due to the state every year. It's basically saying you have to spend a minimum amount of funds on your building maintenance of which we exceed every year. Number five, theater vendor. Number six, security benefits. This is a new vendor or a broker for quarter fifty-seven, quarter three B. No cost to the district. We already have a few, and this is just another one. Number seven, library book disposal. Number eight is transportation agreement, just updating some an amendment to the contract we have. Number nine, non-public initiatives. These are just spending through a state grant, federal grant. And then the H plan for those grants needs to be approved. So it's passed through funds for the district. Disposal of items on gov deals. And number eleven, same thing. And twelve, some additional items. Number thirteen is what I discussed in my update. This is for referendum planning and communication, including setting up internal meetings to discuss who externally going to reach out to and then engaging the community with what their needs are. Fourteen is sort of a standard report, fire drill report, fifteen, financial reports, sixteen, disbursement listings, and seventeen is the payment of bills. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have a motion to approve those items? Ms. Winkler, do we have a second? Ms. Brody, do we have any comments or questions on any of the information that Mr. Jones has read off today? Obviously, we all got the reports and have time to ask questions prior to the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move over to board policies. I believe we have eighteen in the second reading category, ten in the first, and five abolishments. So, Winkler, take it away.
We met on October sixteenth, and we discussed a number of policies. Tonight, we are presenting several policies for first reading that have had various revisions to policies and some regulations as well. And a handful of policies and regulations that are to be abolished. Policies we're looking at for first reading with revisions include policy on religion in schools. The changes that we're making to this policy are recommended changes based on updated guidance from the Department of Education. Resource materials policy revisions to this. Excuse me, resource materials regulation revisions are to reference our policy and regulation ninety-one thirty for procedures for complaints about resource materials. And it's recommended we make these changes for consistency. Our policy for examination for cause for both our instructional staff and our support staff are being revised to better outline the process that's required. And these revisions are recommended based on case law. Our policies and regulations around attendance for both our instructional staff and our support staff are being revised based on revisions to state statutes. And these changes are mandated. Our policies regarding right of privacy for both our instructional staff and support staff are also being revised. These changes are suggested based on based on trying to protect the privacy of our our staff members. Policy and regulation regarding eligibility of resident and non-resident students. These policies, these policy changes are mandated changes based on revisions to state code, excuse me, to the statutes. Policy and regulation around education of homeless children and youth. These, these changes are strongly recommended to ensure compliance with applicable statutes and administrative codes. Policy on food services is been, it has been a number of revisions to state code, excuse me, to to the state statutes. And and these are mandated changes. This, this policy has been completely revised and updated to include a number of different a number of different federal and and state requirements. And then the policies and regulations to be abolished include those around sick leave for our excuse me, our instructional staff as well as our support staff. These policies and regulations should be abolished because last month, we approved the policy, policies and regulations that combine and update these policies into one for all staff members. And policy and regulation around the bridge year pilot program. The pilot program has ended. The last graduating class to be eligible to participate would have been the class of twenty twenty-two, and therefore, this policy should be abolished. And then the policies around the school nutrition program and the meal charges and outstanding food service bill are being abolished because the content of them has been rolled into the policy eighty-five hundred that's being revised that I talked about earlier around food services. So the bottom line on the policy is we want approval for first reading of all of those policies that were that I discussed that are being revised. We want approval to abolish the policies and regs that I talked about abolishing. And we want to approve final reading of all the policies and regulations we discussed at last, uh, last month's meeting. Go on.
Ms. Williams, very common to questions. All of you, David?
Hi.
Motion carries. We'll move on to new board business and new board business. Okay, so none liaison reports.
I have a liaison report on CPAB. We met earlier this week. We, we actually, they they provided us with a really great recap of all of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three accomplishments uh, last year's accomplishments. As well as when we got had an opportunity in throughout the re through the recap they gave us of learning about some of the new initiatives taking place or some of the successful initiatives at some of the that various schools going around. I'll just give a few examples of that. There was an orientation day for children with IEP. There's a new lunch buddy program for students at one of the elementary schools. Nanningham has a new school club. So there's a lot of new exciting developments. The future meetings, the next one will be November thirteenth. And then in December, on December eleventh, there's a parent caregiver, or excuse me, parent caregiver meeting only. So that means no admin there. And that's December eleventh.
Report for Union County School Boards. I had the pleasure of attending the meeting on Wednesday evening. And we had a governmental update, governmental relations update. We spoke about the FY twenty-four budget highlights for the K- twelve formula aid, preschool aid, teacher recruitment and retention, academic recovery, and the extraordinary aid and capital maintenance and emergent needs. And they talked about new education laws addressing staff shortage. And they talked about new education laws addressing staff shortages, about waiving, uh, credentialing fees and certification fees for a year, hiring retirees, uh, talked about student health. Other new education laws included the sick leave expansion, suicide prevention, and ticket sales. Then for the executive branch news, they discussed the passing of Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver and the spring twenty-three assessment results and the A R P E S S R state plan amendments. Next, we had the executive branch news about anti-bullying task force, state board adopting bilingual regulations, New Jersey D O E Office of Climate Change Education, and then looking ahead for the general election, the rein duct session from November to January twenty-four. The deadline for legislative to, legislature to pass to avoid pocket vetoes is December thirtieth. And then the legislature on January eighth will convene to consider any governor vetoes from the end of the session, and January ninth will be the reorg meeting for the twenty-four, twenty-five legislative session. And then we reminded everybody about workshop next week. And the other presentation during the meeting was about New Jersey's expanded sick leave legislation, where they went into great detail to give examples of what the new law encompassed, um, exactly, you know, who it was going to address and what excuses could be used aside from the teacher being ill themselves, uh, family members, children, um, taking care of other sick people, and they limited the number of days, and they, in some instances, may require verification if it is not an illness of why they are taking off, because we're trying to address absenteeism, specifically excessive absenteeism. Yet we wanna be able to give people more time to go to a loved one's funeral or arrangements, especially if they had to travel out of state. So they wanna have all these different scenarios about whether they would be paid or unpaid, but they would be excused from teaching. And the takeaway basically is just to decrease excessive absenteeism and pressure on the already scarce supply of substitutes and to, you know, for the Board of Education and the administrators to remain, uh, to be able to deal with this excessive absenteeism and provide a leave that does not seem to be abused or impact the, uh, education system. And, um, this would also go forward with collective bargaining when the time came, um, to expect statutory rights to be available in addition to those already available under the contract. So I did share this with everybody via email. If you haven't seen it yet, these presentations were online, and Karen Calhoun did forward them to us. So it was a great meeting. It was live in person as well as, uh, virtual, so you could have attended either way. And they did tape the meeting, so if you did wanna hear it, it is available. Okay? Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Kolkowski?
Thank you.
Okay, other liaison reports?
Schools meeting, uh, was yesterday. The Garden State Commission of Schools, uh, meeting was yesterday. Uh, we had Ian Hockley as the guest at the meeting. Um, he is a parent of a student who was killed in the, um, New, yeah, Connecticut, uh, Sandy Hut, thank you. Um, and, uh, he created a program, Dylan's Wings of Change, um, and the Wingman program is part of that, and he came to talk about that and the different ways that different school districts have been using the program. Um, he talked about the new crisis of this stress that's on all of our educators now and how, uh, there's a need to remove obstacles for them and prepare them for the unexpected and foster resilient teams among them, um, get them to know each other and, and create their own connections. Uh, he talked about the Wingman program, building connection and trust, uh, with activities that could be thirty minutes or six hours, uh, or anywhere in between, and that is very adaptable to different, the different needs of different schools. Um, and he will be at workshop, doing a presentation about it at workshop, so for any of us who are there who are interested, uh, you'll get to see him. Um, and he's been at workshop in the past, some of us have seen him before. Um, he talked about the butterfly effect on connection that, uh, if you can just lift one person up, that that passes on. Um, trying to find what else was in here. He had a lot to say, and it sounded like a really useful, uh, program. But I guess that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, any other liaison reports? Okay. Workshops. I'm just leaving a guess next. Resolution, we don't have any, uh, approval of minutes, so do we have a motion to approve the September twentieth regular public board meeting minutes? Ms. Winkler, seconded by Ms.杨. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the second public comment, second and final. In accordance with Scotch Plains Fanwood Public School Bylaws zero one six four and zero one six five, the meeting will be open for fifteen minutes for public comment, maximum three minutes for speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. Speakers, please come to the mic, state your full name, the town in which you reside. Please note, boards use public comment period is an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns and not to debate issues or enter through a question and answer session or cross-examination between the public and the individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board meetings will be resolved that evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue with the superintendent or his or her designate. So now open up the second and final public comment section for fifteen minutes. Please come forward, state your name and the town in which you reside if you have a public comment. Don't see anyone, so I will close that. Upcoming scheduled meetings, so we have our November meeting on November thirtieth and our December meeting on the twenty-first. And good of the order. Does anybody have any comments for the good of the order? Yeah? Mac, welcome. We don't always have this much space, so. Usually a little. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, well, I hate to do it, but do we have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Kolkowski, Ms. Williams, and everybody else, any comments or questions before we adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.